All right, everyone. How we doing? The time has come for the Tuesday, February... Put my glasses on. Eighteenth, 2020 Regular City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio. Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Aye, present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. To lead us in invocation will be Pastor Dr. Wade A. Stevenson of Gideon Baptist Church, located at 1500 Ritten Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois. Immediately after the invocation will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our Girl Scouts, who are selling cookies outside. Hint, hint. All rise for the invocation. Let's pray together. God of weary years and silent tears, the God who has kept us this far on our way and who has by your own might led us into the light, keep us forever on the path, we pray. Keep our city officials and constituents on the path of justice, that it might flow like an ever-flowing stream. Keep our mayor and city council members on the path of understanding, which will lead them ultimately to wisdom, and to let them acknowledge you in all they do. Protect those who protect, keep us safe and serve us every day. Protect our citizens with strength to keep our community strong and vibrant. Keep us on the path of peace and unity with one another. Bless all with a quiet respect for diversity of opinions, and through listening, your servants in government can search all avenues to open them to today's challenges and integrity of justice. Thank you for the recognized celebration this month of the rich heritage of African-American people. Guide, shape, and strengthen all of us, I pray now, in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Come on, ladies. Right there, ladies. Let me stop. All right. To the flag, ladies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies. Just follow, keep following. Go that way, go that way. There you go. Go right out. There you go. Item three, one, I'm sorry, item C, one C. Mayor's comments. Under Mayor's comments, when it starts with sustainability survey, the city of Waukegan is working on its first-ever sustainability plan. We're asking the public to help, to help out by filling out our sustainability survey located on the city's website and social media. This survey will help the sustainability plan identify sustainability goals defined by efforts to preserve our community's natural resources, human health, and economy. Once again, the survey link is on the city's website and social media, and we appreciate all of your help and participation. City stickers. City stickers are on sale as of today. Well, actually, when was that date? February 1st. Jane, of course. February 1st. If you renew, if you renew before March 31st, you can purchase for the early bird special. Excuse me. Also remember to purchase the annual tags for your pets. Don't forget about the pooches. Now, we also can have your, your city stickers at a lot of our partners, which are, I think it's at your check cashing establishments throughout Waukegan. Census. And I'm glad we got a full house here, even for our, our young people. As another reminder to our citizens, you're going to receive a letter in the mail around March asking you to fill out the census. You can complete, you can complete the census online or by phone, but we need, we need, not asking, we need everyone's participation when it comes to this census. Let me tell you why. Our community right now, our census track is right around 80, 89, close to 90,000. However, your police department, your fire department, your public works department, your city services within the city, city hall, services well over 125,000 people. For every citizen that is not counted, our city loses, is it 14,000, Tina? $14,000 per person. We're missing about 30% of the counted population in our community. The most, the big effect on that is who? Our school district. So we need all of your help to participate in this year's 2020 census track. And for those who come up and speak, whether it be for the city or against the city, there's one thing we all can agree on, that we need help on, and that is getting an accurate count as we move forward on this 2020 census track. Your help, our city, this is a plea, not just from me, all the aldermen, we all agree, we need your help. Upcoming events, a number of Black History Month events are taking place in the next two weeks, including Taste of Nigeria and Breaking Bread Community Meal at the Waukegan Public Library, the Underground Railroad in Waukegan at Jack Benny Plaza, Waukegan Public Schools Celebration at Miguel Juarez Middle School, County of Lake County Big 36 Annual Salute to Gospel, and the first-ever Excellence Award at Dendeline Gallery. Details on the calendar. Waukegan High School performs a Midsummer Night Dream at Trap Auditorium, February 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Tickets are available at the door. Three Brothers Theater Comedy, "Boing Boing," it's Friday, it's Friday and Saturday through February 29th, and they are hosting Milwaukee's Deep Space Comedy at their smaller space at February 21st and 22nd. The Waukegan Symphony Orchestra Annual Free Young People's Concert is February 22nd at 11:00 a.m. at the Waukegan Public Library. The concert introduces children to orchestrated music instruments with short, sometimes familiar pieces. HACIA is giving flagger and work zone training with successful completion leading to a certificate at Crystal Race St. Martin de Porres on Saturday, February 29th, starting at 8:30 a.m. Contact Mr. Ivan Ramirez. Ivan, stand up for us, sir. This is I, Mr. Ivan Ramirez, Waukegan hometown boy. Thank you, sir. And you can register for more information at iramirez@haciaworks.org. And right now, I'm going to ask David to come up for, oh, Waukegan Proud Awards.
Mayor, I think you have the first two. Right here, okay. Let's pass these down.
Is it on, David?
The batteries are dead.
While he's going through that, I want to give mine a little.
Okay.
Waukegan residents have been fortunate to have some incredibly talented members of, of the media report about Waukegan for many decades, and tonight, we're going to honor two individuals who are retiring from their many years of public service. We want to take the time, and David's going to mention a name, but before he does that, now they started, everyone. You know this as Lake County Newsun. It used to be called the Waukegan Newsun, located on Sheriden Road, right between Madison and Clayton, at that open grassy knoll, a glass building, and everybody wanted to go in and see because, I think they had a little shield to block the sun, but this is a very special moment for this community because they, I think they're the only two original Waukegan Newsun reporters. Probably left, is that safe, is it safe to say? I'm pumping Waukegan if, if you didn't know that. All right. David, why don't you take over?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this evening, we're honoring the retirement of two people. When we received this message, Mayor basically called me and said, "Say it isn't so, both at the same time. It's unbelievable." And lo and behold, it was true because it was printed in the Newsun. So it was true. So without any further ado, we're going to recognize Frank Abderholden with the Waukegan Proud Award for your 31 years of dedicated service as a reporter with the Lake County Newsun, covering the Waukegan City Council, police, fire, as well as environmental issues and the outdoors, presented on February 18th of 2020. Come on up, Frank.
Did you want to say anything before you go out?
No, that's okay.
No. That wasn't the deal, right, Frank?
Yeah, I think I already said it before, Frank, the original Waukegan Newsun reporter who are given, and county wasn't that big then, so everything hadn't happened in Waukegan. This is a real honor for me to be able to give this to you, for your great dedication, but not just reporting, but fairly reporting, giving, giving the fair the facts about the situation. Now, I don't know, me and you don't know this, but a lot of times, some reporters don't do that. They give one side. For a community which our size, the diversity that we have, I can honestly say, always calls you up, you know what kind of story it's going to be and how it represents the community. And with that, we present this Waukegan Proud Award to you, sir. Thank you very much.
As we always do, we take the, the picture with all of our aldermen along with the mayor. Now, who's with, who's with?
Um, like, what? Thank you.
Can I come up? Come on up, yeah. It's new to meet you for the first time.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, man.
We'll be looking for your new byline.
So, if you don't think 31 years working at the Newsun was enough, I'm going to up the ante and say Jim Newton has presented this Waukegan Proud Award for your 35 years of dedicated service as a reporter with the Lake County Newsun. And Jim covered municipal government, the Lake County Forest Reserve, and Lake County Court.
Come on, Jim.
Yeah.
You might want to talk.
35 years?
And he was a politician, huh? Yeah, but again, one of the originals in our community to give fair reporting about the news in our community. But you're not, and it was tough sometimes, but you did it because it was a community which you, you had an opportunity to have the county, the forest reserve, and the city. Wow. Good stuff. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, look.
Yeah.
All right, and stay right there, Mayor. Okay. So there, there are more, but don't everyone get up yet. So bear with me for a quick moment, please. So the, the next, I have the wonderful honor of presenting some of the most amazing young people you are ever going to meet. They are some of the most courageous, and some of the most trustworthy, and some of the most amazing young ladies that I have ever met in my life, and that is the ladies of my under-19 women's soccer team for Heart of the City. They're here because we went to represent Waukegan at a tournament in Naples, Florida, and we finished second place in the tournament. So first and foremost, we want to make a quick presentation to Scott McClellan and the rest of the staff from Heart of the City. This Waukegan Proud Award, the city of Waukegan does hereby present Heart of the City Under-19 Women's Soccer Team this Waukegan Proud Award for your second-place finish at the Dimitri Cup in Naples, Florida, on February 1st and 2nd, 2020, for serving as a positive role model and for proudly representing Waukegan on and off the field, presented February 18th of 2020. Come on up, Scott. Okay, so really quick, I promised, I promised everyone that I'd do this as quick as possible. So ladies, when I call your name, come on up and stand next to the mayor, and I'll keep your certificates for later, okay? First, we have Ashley Albaron. Marley Banalis. Josely Flores. Andrea Guzman. Itzel Hernandez. Cami Maldonado. Bernie Martinez, or Bernice, I mean. Jessica Malgoza. Sofia Melissio. Leilani Morales. T, just quite simply, T. T Olmeda. Jasmine Perez, who just got injured playing goalkeeper not too long ago, and she's now one-handed for a while. Julissa Perez, who is our goalkeeper.
Wow.
Rosio Salas is here. Alexis Serrano. And Mackenzie's not here, but Mackenzie Ramsey also is on our team. So here you have it, folks. So they're an all-star team. They go to various high schools in our area, and they're about to go on to their high school seasons and square off in the game of fair play in their high school uniforms, but they have come together so well in this past many months. They have taught me about resilience. They have taught me about, again, being courageous, and I certainly appreciate all that they do to wear that uniform proudly and represent our community on and off the soccer field. It takes big shoulders, but they do it with great conviction, and I appreciate them. Thank you. Picture.
Know what to do, huh?
I'm a goalie. Yeah, goalie, there we go. Turn her around so you can show the, there you go, show the name.
They're good at this now, too.
Are we good? My mom, dad, grandma. Congratulations, ladies.
And sorry, but we have dinner plans. We're going to get some hamburgers and milkshakes to celebrate, so I bid you a fond farewell. I also want to give a shout-out to Sean Watkins over there. He's one of our coaches. We got Coach Laddio over there, and also Coach Andre. They're proudly representing us, too, and they do so many things to get these girls all into a college of their choosing soon. And thank you so much. Have a good night. Take care, ladies.
Give a couple minutes to clear out. What is this? Chicago Workers Collaborative What? Let's give them a couple minutes to clear out everybody. All right, here we go. Item number 2A, motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Bolton, motion to adopt Resolution 20-R-08, the Underground Railroad in Waukegan. Are there any questions to the motion? Before we vote on it, I'm going to ask the clerk to read the motion, I mean, to read the resolution.
Resolution 20-R-08, the Underground Railroad in Waukegan. Whereas, the Underground Railroad was established in the early 1800s as a secret network of safe houses and other safe havens for helping slaves escape to the north, and whereas escaping from slavery was very difficult and dangerous, and the Fugitive Slave Act of 1850 made it illegal for anyone to help runaway slaves, and stiff fines and punishments were given to people found to be harboring and helping slaves seeking freedom in the northern states. And whereas, the Underground Railroad operated throughout Lake County, where many escaping slaves made their way into Waukegan after traveling north along the Mississippi River and would often continue their journey north to Canada on a ship sailing on Lake Michigan. And whereas, it is estimated that 40,000 to 60,000 slaves escaped to freedom using the Underground Railroad. And whereas, due to the secrecy involved, possible Underground Railroad sites are located in Waukegan. And thanks to the pioneering research of the late Dr. James Dorsey, who wrote the book "Up South: Blacks in Chicago Suburbs, 1719 through 1983," along with countless others, the Waukegan History Museum has been able to pinpoint probable Waukegan locations along with Waukegan notables that were directly involved in the Underground Railroad. And whereas, the Waukegan Historical, Historical Society is hosting two upcoming Free Family Programs that highlight Waukegan's contribution to the Underground Railroad, including the Underground Railroad in Waukegan at 6:30 on February 19th, and Underground Railroad Quilt Symbols at 10:00 a.m. on February 29th at the Waukegan Park District's Jack Benny Center for the Arts. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Cunningham and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby honor the legacy and historical significance of our community as an integral part of the Underground Railroad, and encourage the community to participate in these programs to learn more about this key piece of Waukegan's history. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to the Waukegan City Council meeting on the 18th day of February 2020 as part of this year's Black History Month celebration in Waukegan.
Thank you. Yeah, give it up. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Let's do a roll call. Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, and we have members of the Waukegan Park District Historical Society here to receive the resolution. I will come down. Maybe up front, please. The executive director, Mr. Jay. Okay, Josh Bill, and then chairman of the board, Mr. Mark Jones. I will come down, and you guys know the position. We have to take another picture and present. Group photo. All right, Alderman, I think this is the last one. We have to do that. Bill is not here with this. Bad link. On behalf of the mayor, all the aldermen and citizens of this great city will present this resolution to you on behalf of our community, what this, this Underground Railroad to Waukegan meant to our community, and we look at it now, the diversity that we have is because of this. Congratulations to you, and keep this history going. Absolutely. You're welcome.
I'm not, I just think that, I think it's tremendous that Waukegan did have such original Underground Railroad tradition. It was an anti-slave movement here, so I saw that Frederick Douglass himself spoke here, and I think that we can recognize the great contributions of literature, Jack Benny, the first contributions in entertainment, that we can find a way to acknowledge the presence of Underground Railroad and those great women and men who contributed to the community. I'm saying that, hoping we can work together, and hopefully create a vibe. All right.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Bart.
Good job.
How are you doing? That's it. I promise you. Anything else, do we? Item three, audience time. Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have a full list here. I'm going to call the first five names. Go ahead and go to the east side of the room, line up, state your name, and you have three minutes. I'll have Cecilia Jacobs, Freddie Amador, Deriglio Hernandez, Juana...
I'll have Cecilia Jacobs, Freddie Amador, Trigilio Hernandez, Juana Ganbi, and Santos Oliver.
Wait, are we going to need someone to translate it all? Is Susanna, Susanna? See if Susanna's outside. Rosa, Rosa, okay. Thank you, Susanna. I knew I saw her. Susanna, can you help with the translation, please?
Thank you. Buenas noches. Good evening. Mi nombre es Cecilia Jacobo. My name is Cecilia Jacobo. Y he veni... y he vivido en Waukegan por más de diez años. And I have lived in Waukegan for more than 10 years. Estamos hoy aquí ante las autoridades de nuestra comunidad. We are in front of you today and in front of our community. Para darles a conocer los problemas que atravesamos día a día. To inform you of all the problems we're facing day after day. Nosotros, los trabajadores temporales. We, the workers of temporary employment. Algunos de los aquí presentes. Some of the employees here present today. Hemos trabajado por más de 25 años con un estato temporal. We have worked for over 25 years with a temporary status. En muchas agencias temporales. And many of these temporary agencies. Las agencias temporales se quedan con gran parte de nuestro salario. The temporary agencies tend to keep with a great portion of our salaries. Ya que las agencias temporales nos adquilan a todas las compañías en el área de Waukegan y otros alrededores. Due to the fact that they rent us with different companies around the area. Para estas agencias, nosotros los empleados. For all these agencies, all the employees. Nosotros solo somos números y cifras. Were just numbers and amounts. De dinero que les hacemos ganar. And amounts of money that we make them gain. Y muchas de estas agencias no cuentan con un registro. And many of these agencies do not even come with a registration or certification. Tenemos que trabajar jornadas extenuantes. We have to work long hours. Recibiendo bajos salarios. Receiving low salaries. Robo de nuestro tiempo extra. Stealing from us our extra time. Nos niegan los beneficios. They're denying our benefits. Como aseguranza médica y vacaciones. Such as insurance and vacation. Y tenemos que soportar abusos. And we have to accept the abuse. Como el acoso sexual. Such as sexual harassment. Racismo. Racism. Y represalias. And all the other issues. En ocasiones tenemos que trabajar sin el equipo necesario de protección. Sometimes we have to work without the equipment, the protected equipment, or the safety equipment. Bajo mínimas condiciones de seguridad. Under very low minimum security, uh, safety. Cuando nos atrevemos a alzar la voz. When we say something out loud. Nos despiden. They fire us. O nos mueven de la compañía. Or they move us from the company. Para otra compañía nueva. To another, uh, to another new company. So las represalias son constantes. So the, the abuse is constantly. Cuando exigimos salario justo.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Freddie Amador, please state your name.
Excuse me. Ma'am, please. Ma'am, please.
Thank you.
The profanity, ma'am, please. Thank you.
Freddie Amador. Well, while we nod, Lake County is the number six in the nation.
Freddie, hold on a second. Everyone who's coming up, you have three minutes to speak. We just want to let you know, just in case you didn't know it, three minutes to speak. She's going to start over for you, alright?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. While, Lake County, we nod, is the number six in the nation, largest bridge that companies in Waukegan. They also use temporary agencies to embody all the abuse. As a temporary worker, we are tired about that. We are tired. I've been here for like 10, more than 10 years in Waukegan, since I moved from Washington, this is it. Since I've been here, nobody pays attention to this. The official issues, I don't know if they close their eyes, they haven't seen all the stamp agencies in each corner. To us, this is not normal. Because for us, they only bring a lot of issues, like I see on those, on those companies where I work for. A lot of workers complain because they, 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 they don't, they discriminated about their color, about their language, about their genders, and many, many more. Yeah. We, we think we need to do something. And we want, as a worker, we want a meeting with the mayor and also with the councils. Also, we had a movie, a 22-minute movie that can tell all the issues that we find in the area using those temporary agencies. And Juliet, Julia declined two agencies last year to not giving a permit to operating in the city. I think we need to follow that. The city of Waukegan needs to do something and protect the people who work in here and who live in Waukegan, like us. Thank you.
Thank you. Trigilio Hernandez, please state your name.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Trigilio Hernandez. Vivo viviendo aquí en Waukegan por 25 años.
My name is Trigilio Hernandez, and I have lived here in Waukegan for 25 years.
Tengo mi casa también pagando ahorita.
I am a homeowner, which I am paying right now.
Trabajé en una compañía por 25 años.
I worked in a company for 25 years.
Fui viendo cada año, cada año cómo esa compañía fue creciendo.
I saw how this company was growing and growing.
Estaba en Gurnee, y de ahí se cambiaron para acá, para Waukegan.
They were in Gurnee, and they, they moved to Waukegan.
Estuvimos trabajando muy bien unos, un tiempo con ellos.
We were working very well with them for, for some time.
Estuve 15 años por la compañía.
I worked there for 15 years.
Más después, me pasaron por la oficina, y esa oficina me descansó.
But after that, they changed me to work, to work under a temporary agency, under the same company, and that company let me go.
Y después iban a buscar trabajo, y no nos daban.
And then we were going to look for a job, and we were not able to be hired.
Porque esa oficina decía que nosotros no nos dieran trabajo, para atrás.
Because that office said that not to hire us anymore.
Ah, eso es todo. Gracias por escucharme.
This is it. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Juana Garabe.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Juana.
Buen, good evening, my name is Juana.
Vivo en Waukegan por muchos años.
I live in Waukegan for many years.
Mis hijos nacieron aquí, crecieron aquí.
My children were born here, and they were raised here.
Estudiaron en la escuela de Waukegan.
They studied here in the Waukegan School District.
Por mucho tiempo tuve trabajo.
For many years I had work. I had a job.
Por medio de las oficinas.
Uh, working under a temporary agency.
Pero un mal día me llamaron y me dijeron que ya no tenía más trabajo.
But one day they called me and told me that I didn't have a job anymore.
Y desde entonces días tenemos trabajo y días no.
Since then, sometimes we have a job and some others we don't.
Vamos a las oficinas si no nos mandan porque estamos viejos.
And we go to the temporary agencies trying to look for a job, and they don't hire us because they claim that we're old.
Piensan que uno está viejo y ya no puede trabajar.
They think that we're old, that we cannot work anymore.
Pero los viejos también tenemos que pagar renta.
But the seniors also have to, have to pay bills.
Gas, lo.
Like rent, uh, electricity.
Y tenemos extras, gastos de doctor.
And we also have doctors' bills.
Algunos tenemos, este, hijos y discapacitados que dependen de nosotros.
Many of us have disabled children who depend on us.
Entonces, las oficinas nos discriminan y no nos mandan a trabajar.
Therefore, all these agencies discriminate us, and they don't give us the opportunity to work.
Eh, por favor, espero que en su buen corazón nos ayude.
We're hoping under your good heart that you will be able to help us.
A que ya no nos, no tengan más represalias las oficinas con nosotros.
So they don't take advantages of us, um, so they don't take advantages of us.
Es todo, muchas gracias, y espero que nos dé otra oportunidad de hablar con usted.
Thank you, and we're hoping that you will give us another opportunity to speak to you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
I'm going to call the next group. Santos Oliver, Carmen Garza, Rosa Gutierrez, Ella Soto, and Dylan Burdette. Santos Oliver, Carmen Garza, Rosa Gutierrez, Ella Soto, Dylan Burdette. Please state your names. Santos? No, Santos?
No.
Carmen Garza?
Carmen Garza. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Carmen Garza. Soy trabajadora temporal y he vivido en Waukegan por 14 años.
Good evening, my name is Carmen Garza, and I am a temporary worker, and I have lived in Waukegan for 14 years.
Estoy aquí esta noche para expresar al igual que mis compañeros.
I'm here to, here to express, same as my, my coworkers.
Mi inconformidad sobre el trato que recibimos por parte de las oficinas de empleo temporal.
The way that I have been, been treated by the temporary agencies.
Ya que en la mayoría de los lugares a donde nos envían a trabajar.
Uh, due to the fact that, to the places where we are being sent to, to work.
Recibimos malos tratos por parte del personal de esas empresas.
We received mistreatment by these enterprises.
En esto me refiero a que ellos nos gritan.
And I'm referring to this, and how they yell at us.
Nos piden que hagamos cosas que no están incluidas en el perfil de nuestro puesto.
They ask us to do work that is not, does not include in our job performance or request.
Y si no lo hacemos, nos desocupan.
If we don't do it, they, they fire us.
Además, somos víctimas de racismo.
And we are also victims of racism.
Y las oficinas de empleo no hacen nada para defendernos.
And the offices of employment do not do anything to protect us.
También, no importa el tiempo que tengamos trabajando en una oficina.
It doesn't matter how long you, we have worked for an office.
No tenemos derecho a pago por días festivos ni vacaciones.
We don't have any benefits such as dates of, in vacation.
Por lo que pedimos de su apoyo para cambiar esta situación en las oficinas de empleo de Waukegan.
Therefore, we're asking for your support and to help us to change this situation in the offices of employment in Waukegan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rosa Gutierrez?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Rosa Gutierrez.
Good evening, my name is Rosa Gutierrez.
Representando a mis compañeros y trabajadores de Waukegan.
Representing my, my coworkers and employment, employer, employees of Waukegan.
Hablaré de las injusticias y discriminaciones.
I will speak in reference to the injustice and discrimination.
Que hoy en día un trabajador temporal sufre.
That an employee, a temporary employee is suffering.
Al ser contratado por agencias y compañías temporales.
Uh, when they are contracted by agencies and temporary companies.
Al no respetar sus derechos, haciéndolos sentir diferente e inferior en su área de trabajo.
Uh, when they don't respect their rights, or making them feel different and inferior in the area of work.
Ya que un trabajador temporal no tiene voz ni voto para estas, estas agencias.
Due to the fact that a temporary employee do not have a vote on, under these agencies.
Es importante para la comunidad escuchar.
It is important for the community to be listened.
Y respetar las necesidades del trabajador.
And to respect the needs of the employee.
No solo ser un número, sino una persona con derechos e igualdades.
Not only to be a number without, um, not to be a number. But a person with rights and equality.
Podemos invitarlos a un meeting.
We would like to invite you to a meeting.
Para dialogar con nosotros y llegar a un acuerdo.
To speak with us so we can come into an agreement.
El 8 de marzo.
On March 8th, 2020.
Y mostrarles un documental acerca de los trabajadores temporales.
So we can show, so we can have the opportunity to show a documentary about the temporary employee, employees.
En la biblioteca de Waukegan.
In the Waukegan Public Library at 1 o'clock.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ella Soto?
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Ella Soto.
Good evening, my name is Ella Soto.
Pues yo vengo igual que mis compañeros a apoyarlos porque igual que ellos he sido discriminada en mi trabajo.
I'm here as well as my coworkers, due to the fact that, just like them, I have been discriminated.
Y pues también en oficinas temporales, que nomás nos usan cuando nos necesitan, y ya cuando pasa algo, que reportamos un accidente, o algo que nos discriminan por el lenguaje, o por cualquier cosa, pero siempre recibimos discriminación.
Due to the fact of the discrimination, when we say something, we are being let go. We're being fired from our jobs.
Y pues nos despiden sin justificación, no más.
And we are being fired without any justification.
Y entonces nosotros tenemos que andar de una oficina a una oficina, y pues nos pagan lo que quieren.
And due to that, we have to go from one office to another office, and they just pay us whatever they want to pay us.
Y eso es en todas las oficinas de aquí de Waukegan.
And this is in all the temporary, I mean, I guess that she means the temporary offices here in Waukegan.
Y yo creo que todos somos seres humanos, y deben de respetarnos porque nosotros venimos a este país igual que todos a trabajar, a luchar, y no venimos a robar a nadie.
And we're here in this country because we would like, just like everybody else, we're here to work. And we're not here to take anything from anybody else.
Y estas oficinas se han levantado gracias a nosotros, los trabajadores, que trabajamos fuerte.
All these offices have been successful due to the work that all these temporary employees are doing for them.
Y por eso venimos a pedir de su apoyo para que esto acabe más, que se acabe y que ya nos sigan con esas injusticias para nosotros.
And this is the reason we're here, to request for your support and your help so all this injustice can be, can be terminated.
Porque si uno no alza su voz, pues nunca se van a dar cuenta de lo que uno está pasando en los trabajos.
If we don't raise our voice, that's the reason that no one else finds out what is really going on in these jobs.
Bueno, eso es todo, y agradezco que pues nos hayan tomado en cuenta para escucharnos, y espero que pues se pueda hacer algo para ayudarnos, porque no somos solo nosotros, habemos muchos.
And this is the only reason we're here, and we're hoping that, that you have listened to our needs and that we can do something about it.
Gracias.
Thank you. Dylan Burdette?
Thank you, Dylan Burdette. So as some of my fellow temporary workers have mentioned, there are over 15 staffing agents, temporary staffing agencies that work in the city of Waukegan, and Lake County ranks sixth out of all U.S. counties with the highest percentages of temporary labor. Most of these temp workers are not temporary at all. As they've mentioned, they become perma-tims who work for decades as employees of temp agencies with very little hope of ever converting to regular employment. And their wages are on average 41% lower of those that work beside them and doing the same jobs as direct hire.
same jobs as direct hires. In 2017, worker, temporary workers, including those in Waukegan, found incredibly high rates of unlawfully dangerous conditions, wage theft on top of, on top of poverty level wages, discrimination in the workplace, and employee, employer retaliation when they attempted to report abuse or improve wages or working conditions. And in 2017, they found that six years was the average duration of work within the temporary agencies. There was a law passed in 2017 in which Illinois became a leader by creating, by passing the Responsible Jobs Creation Act. However, in, by 2018, they found that there was widespread abuses and ignoring of this act by the temporary agencies. And in fact, temporary agencies were enticed to, to skirt these laws by underbidding their competition to offer labor at the lowest cost and letting these agencies survive by charging fees to workers and engaging in schemes to pay, to lower the, the workers' comp insurance premiums, premiums and take advantage of loopholes and work opportunity tax credits. However, there is an emergency, an emerging movement for the Temporary Agency Seal of Approval Program which seeks to address these deep-seated challenges through the induction of market incentives for temp agency compliance, compliance that is verified by independent monitoring supported by community coenforcement partners. We would ask that Waukegan continue to expand the state's leadership by taking action to protect and lift from poverty vulnerable temporary workers through licensing, taxing, and procurement policies which promote high-road socially responsible staffing agencies. We would ask that you adopt the resolution that has been passed out to all of you and we would ask that you meet with the leaders of the Trabajadores Temporales de Lake County to discuss this resolution. We would also, I would like to reiterate that we would invite you to come out on March 8th. There's gonna be a screening of Perma Temping, which is a documentary series put on by a nationwide network of workers' justice organizations. It's gonna be screened at 1:00 PM at the Waukegan Public Library. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group will be Joshua Van Dyke, Annette Darden, Kelvin Mathis, Brother Blanks. Joshua Van Dyke, Annette Darden, Kelvin Mathis, and Brother Blanks. Please state your name.
Joshua Van Dyke. Lakefront DSA is very pleased to host the organization Vote Yes for Fair Tax for upcoming town hall on the Fair Tax Amendment vote that'll be going on for the Illinois Constitution. On March 1st at 3:00 PM also at the Waukegan Public Library. It'll be a town hall where they, they'll provide information about, information about the vote as well as take questions on it. So anyone in, it's a nonpartisan event where everyone's welcome, both elected officials, property owners, business owners, and just anyone who's concerned about rising taxes or might have questions or concerns. It's a pretty big change. Currently, progressive tax code is now banned in the Illinois Constitution, so they'd be voting on to make amendment, which is a pretty big change. So it's understandable to have a lot of questions on that. So again, March 1st at 3:00 PM at the Waukegan Public Library, we do, they'll be doing a town hall on that with the Vote Yes for Fair Tax group. It'll be a fully bilingual town hall, Spanish and English, and there will be time to ask questions as well, after the information is given. So I hope to see everyone there. Anyone who'd be, have questions or concerns about rising taxes is welcome. And that's about it. Have a go.
Thank you.
Annette Darden, I am here on behalf of Stop ETO of Lake County. I have some flyers there if you guys would like to, actually, we would really appreciate if you would show up to the legal forum on Sunday at the Milan and it's from 2:00 to 5:00 and it's regarding the ethylene oxide exposure and the legal ramifications of it and some of the rights that people with cancer that are getting in the community and so forth. But I'm primarily here to speak for Dawn. Her son has cancer. She lives down the road from me. His name's Samuel and he has acute lymphomic leukemia. And I just wanna read this to you. She posted this not too long ago on Facebook. She said, "I can't sleep. I can't stop thinking about August and the days leading up to Samuel's cancer diagnosis and now everything changed. I can't stop thinking about July and how tired he was and how I thought he was going through a phase and now I missed all the signs. I can't stop thinking about if he would have been diagnosed earlier, would he not be diagnosed at a very high risk and not have to endure the high doses of chemotherapy drugs and the extra year of treatment. I can't stop thinking about everyone else and their healthy babies and how their lives just go on. I can't stop thinking about how my child only ate five bites of a pancake and two bites of a pizza all day. He had been starving for seven. I can't stop thinking about my boy's childhood being robbed. I can't stop thinking about swim lessons and gymnastics and everything the both of them are missing out on. I can't stop thinking about how isolated Samuel feels and how he has completely shut down and now, and how a three-year-old can experience depression, anxiety, fear, pain, and distrust and disappointment. I can't stop thinking about my little boy, my beautiful precious child, my flesh and blood, my everything, my heart. How can something so ugly try to take away my beautiful boy? I hate cancer. I love him so much." And I just wanted to quote Dr. Buchanan once again from UIC. She stated that children are considered to be very vulnerable populations for any environmental contaminant and should be extra protected. She also stated that, this is a class one known carcinogen, carcinogen, it should not be emitted anywhere near where people are living. Period. So Medline should not be running regardless of how much is being emitted into the air, regardless of any kind of updates that they do to, you know, their equipment. They should not be running. I request that you utilize home rule authority.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kelvin Mathis?
Kelvin Mathis, Mr. Mayor, City Council. On a side note, I'm still not understanding this connection with politics and religion. I mean, I'm, it's like a bad marriage to me. I can't tell who's damaged the worst, politicians, I mean, the government or the church, but that's not what I wanted to talk about. And by the way, you can read Matthew, Chapter 6, what it, for the Christians, about public prayer. Anyway, I wanna talk about integrity. That's what I wanna talk about. There's this phrase that I've been seeing on television. It says, "In a case of emergency, break glass." And it deals with corruption. And, and as we all know, corruption is so bad, it's just out in the open for everybody to see. It's so bad. It's got to the top of our country, corruption. And it's due to lack of integrity. And I'm not talking about bad judgment. As Alderman, I know you voted, there was eight votes for the city lights, for the, the football players out. That's just bad judgment when you, you can vote against kids. That, that's not integrity. That's just bad judgment. And integrity is about not cheating anyone, not stealing from anyone, not lying to anyone, just doing the right thing. And it doesn't matter if you wear a police uniform, fire uniform, if you're a mayor with a nice suit, integrity is within. Now, Mr. Mayor, you read a nice letter about a police officer helping the lady out and even went out, it looked like he went out of his way and followed up. Now, he didn't do that because of that uniform that he was wearing. He did that because of, if anything, it's because of his parents, his mother and father who raised him, right, to do the right thing. That comes second to the uniform. It's just aided him to do what was in him. Mr. Mayor, we've been having some serious complaints against the police and I don't take it lightly. I did my homework. Now, the first complaint, I would have sworn that the cops chased a young man down. And, and this is no disrespect to any of the families here, cause it's, it's still kinda rawning to death and everything. But I did my homework on that one and I was disappointed. And that's what came in my mind, integrity. We gotta have it. Every citizen has to have integrity. This cost us. When things not, when the corruption.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna finish this the next time.
Thank you.
Cause I didn't even get started.
Thank you. Brother Blanks?
You know, after being a part of a successful lawsuit against the city under the $500 impoundment and been a part of a successful complaint filed on behalf of Ms. Mary Reese with the CGB program and part of a successful complaint which we filed through Black Abolition Movement for the Mind through Jonathan, Jonathan Garcia when he's, when his nose was broken in your police booking room. One thing that I have learned from filing these complaints is what our ancestor Frederick Douglass told us, that power concedes to nothing without a demand. You have to make demands. Also, yesterday, we celebrated the birthday of one of our greatest of freedom fighters and that was none other than, I was about to say Fred Hampton, but no, Huey P. Newton was his birthday yesterday. So what I passed out to you, what you have in commemoration of Fred Hamp, I mean, in commemoration of Huey P. Newton and Frederick Douglass, I have extended to you our list of standing demands as it relates to Avion Cotton. I expounded on those demands about two city council meetings ago, but you all understand it better when it's put in writing. So I have extended a copy to you and the best sense of transparency, I will be posting a copy to my Facebook page and considering the court date we have between us and the city come April, I will forward this as a part of the complaint to the IGA, the Illinois' Attorney General. As Mr. Mathis said, there has to be some changes and accountability and the best accountability come when the community and the people make demands and not ask. So I would say that this is something, changes have to be made. Mayor, you said in the, in a, in a article that you were looking for half-change. Changes should be made when you invite the community to the table. So part of that complaint, part of those demands is that we and that you meet with the city, I mean, meet with the community and let them have some input on what they feel some of those changes should be since the changes are being on, on behalf of them. So I will be posting those. And if I have time, as a correction, Mr. Turner, last week, our last city council meeting, you stated that when you speak at this podium, you have to speak to the, you have to speak to the Alderman or to the board. And this has nothing to do with, for, or on behalf of Margaret Carrasco ever. But in the best sense of the community, when people speak, it is their audience time. I have seen people from Main Street to art space to even myself come up and advertise and promote what they're doing, how they're doing it. So if you're gonna enforce that, it has to be fair.
Thank you, Brother Blanks.
Not to get the city in trouble. Thank you.
The last group will be Maurice Barnett, Margaret Carrasco, and Sarah Crawford. Maurice Barnett, Margaret Carrasco, and Sarah Crawford. Please state your name.
Good evening. Maurice Barnett, Stretch. I'm just here today, you saw us, me and a nice group of people speak about two weeks ago, asking for assistance and help in regard to what I deemed as harassment. We also spoke about just hoping for resolve. So last week, after the meeting, I'll be honest to say that we've accomplished little of nothing. I, I did reach out to Mayor's office as well as I attempted to contact Ms. Bowden. I left a message, didn't get a response. I did speak with Mr. Kirkwood, also spoke with Alderman Taylor, spoke in detail with Alderman Keith Turner as well as Alderman Mozio, who's not here. Ultimately, I'm not sure we're going with this thing because once again, we have not struck up a, a date for a meeting that we can both agree on. I, I did request a meeting where all the Aldermen can be present, even if it's off the record, without calling a full city meeting. It could be a luncheon or whatever it is, just so I can hear their opinions on me and I can give them my opinions of what I believe is happening. I still would like resolve. Not sure how we can come to it, but I, I'm just asking that we find a way where we can meet, cause it would have been easy after the article in the Tribune yesterday to bring a thousand people in here, but I'm not here to make a spectacle out of the city that we're all trying to grow. So I came solo. I didn't tell people until the last minute that I'm gonna be here, but that is not the intentions, to bring the city down, is to try to continue to build the city up. So I'm asking if we can find another way somehow to just sit down as human beings and have a discussion. That is all.
Thank you. Margaret Carrasco.
Yes, good evening. Tonight, I wanted to congratulate Mayor Sam Cunningham. Yes, that's right. Congratulate him for being the most hated person in the city of Waukegan today because of all the corruption, raising our taxes, and harassing business owners. Next, Waukegan residents, now you can be able to, we're setting up an Eventbrite so you know when the nook to court hearing is in regards to litigation against the city for the illegal vote. I consider increasing our, the tax levy. You can just search "stop corruption and raising Waukegan taxes" and all the information is going to be there. There's been like so many articles recently and it's very sad to hear what the residents have to say, but there's one in particular that I just have to read that really stood out. It says, I didn't write it, someone else did, okay? "When is the harassment of Stretch going to end? Mayor Sam Cunningham continues to destroy every legitimate, hard-working business owner in the city. He, not the Police Department, has been trying to force Stretch out of business from the day he became mayor. Strangely, Stretch was fine under the previous white mayors, but has caught under Sam. The entire community has suffered under this corrupt mayor. He started out by firing Azelle Robbins, Lake County Tony, and replacing with companies who had been fired by previous administration. He eliminated the diversity officer. He granted Peter Baker a waiver to not to buy by hiring 30% of local minority persons. Minorities, these decisions alone have taken approximately $2 million out of your pockets, but Mayor Cunningham didn't stop there. When the Minister's Alliance tried to reason with him, he went on public rant and called them, insulted, insulted them. These are the same guys who supported and prayed for him. Yes, Sam has only dragged the city into the ground. He and Bond, as we know, all the scandal with the donations, then we had video gaming, increasing number of machines, et cetera, et cetera, to fatten his own, fatten his own corrupt pockets with kickbacks. Mayor Cunningham has also made numerous public racist remarks against Alderman Taylor and previously Alderman May as referring to them, and these are people who heard him say that, those white women. Consistently yells at and bullies women and allows me to be bullied."
Thank you, Ms. Margaret. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Crawford?
Hello, my name is Sarah Crawford and I'm a member of Stop ETO in Lake County. I wanted to first say that we would like the city of Waukegan to exercise home rule authority to protect not only the Waukegan residents, but also the Lake County residents from this poisonous, poisonous ethylene oxide emissions. The second point I would like to make is that back on January 25th, I meet, emailed all of you, asking you to attend our upcoming legal education forum that Annette already mentioned. It's being held this Sunday at the Milan Banquet Center off of Lakers Road. There will be a panel of several different law firms answering community members' questions. It is a free event and we hope that all of the Aldermen and the Mayor can attend this event. I know several of you have already RSVP'd and I greatly appreciate. and I greatly appreciate that. It is also open to the public. So, for any of you that are sitting in the audience right now, and if you're interested in attending, we would hope that you would please join us. It is a bilingual event in both English and Spanish. The last point that I would like to make is that we will be introducing new, stronger legislation for the spring session regarding ethylene oxide emissions. We ask that you, the leaders of Waukegan, not only support this new, stronger legislation by filing witness slips, but also by helping raise awareness about this stronger legislation with your constituents. Please continue to protect Waukegan residents and Lake County residents. Please don't choose corporate greed over public health. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes public participation.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Item four, consent agenda. The motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Turner, to approve Items four through E and G through N. Are there any questions to the motion? I'll read the motions. Motion to approve regular meeting minutes from Monday, February 3, 2020. Motion to approve resolution reallocating 2020 volume cap to the Village of Buffalo Grove, Illinois, to allow for the city of Waukegan, Waukegan's participation in the private activity bond clearinghouse pool facilitated by the Lake County Partnership for Economic Development, Inc. Motion for Fire Chief to apply for, and then if accepted, for the mayor to execute a grant agreement with the State Fire Marshal to provide $21,180 in funding for thermal imaging cameras. This grant is 100% reimbursable with no local match. Item D, motion to authorize, motion to authorize the Fire Chief to apply for an assistance to firefighters grant AFG to provide funding for a fire, for a fire pump truck. This grant is 90% reimbursable and requires a local match. Item E, motion to authorize the Fire Chief to apply. Rosa, Rosa. Thanks, Rosa. Item E, motion to authorize the Fire Chief to apply for an assistance to firefighters grant AFG, to grant funding to self-contained breathing apparatus. This grant is 90% reimbursable and requires a local match. Item G, motion to affirm the building in CDBG director's execution of a contract to express employment professionals for a total combined amount not to exceed $75,000 in the 2019-2020 fiscal year, and further to grant a good faith waiver for the bidding process pursuant to Section 2-45I, parentheses, seven. Item H, motion to approve the Public Works Director and the Fire Chief's execution of contracts with Latcher &amp; Sons for a total combined amount not to exceed $40,000 in the 2019-2020 fiscal year, and further to grant a good faith waiver to the bidding process pursuant to Section 2-458, parentheses, I, parentheses, seven. Motion I to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Waukegan Tire in amount not to exceed $30,000 in the total 2019-2020 fiscal year for the purpose of vehicle tires and related parts pursuant to City of Waukegan Code of Section Government Joint Purchasing Bid Waiver referenced by the Illinois Journal Service Master Purchase Order 18-416-CMS-Boss4-P-5995. Item J, motion to approve, motion to approve vendor payments dated February 17, 2020 in a total of $1,930,929.12. Item K, motion to approve regular payroll dated February 14, 2020 in a total amount of $1,558,748, Item L, motion to approve elected officials civil service type and dated February 14, 2020 in a total amount of $6,866.66. Item M, motion to approve PBLC Holiday Buyback dated February 14, 2020 in a total amount of $1,753.90. Item N, motion to approve all raffles and sales application. All right, any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Five A, motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve Chair's monthly report. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item C. Correction, item six. Finance Impairance Committee. Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Kirkwood. Motion to approve an economic incentive agreement between the City of Waukegan Elite Motors Works, Inc. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Four to four.
Most, uh-
Mayor Cunningham.
Aye. Motion's passed, five to four. Motion by Alderman, motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Taylor. Approve resolution expressing official intent regarding the potential establishment of a redevelopment project area, potential establishment of the business district, potential negotiation of agreement, and a potential reimbursement of certain expenditures in connection therewith by the City of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois. Any questions to the motion? Alderman Florian.
Mayor, I had a bit of a conversation with Noel before the meeting started, and she said she wouldn't mind coming up and kind of expounding on this a little bit.
Sure. Do you like for to come up, ma'am?
Please.
Noel? Thank you.
Good evening. So, as I've mentioned to, I think, most of you at this point, this resolution is brought to your attention because we think that there might be a reason to consider a new TIF district, possibly a business improvement district or business district, there are different names for it, in the Fountain Square area. In order to determine whether that's an appropriate thing to do, we need to do some studies to analyze the benefits of creating that type of district. In order to do those studies, we'll need to expend funds. This resolution would allow us to reimburse the general fund where we would pay the costs of those studies in the event such a district is established. It doesn't mandate that a district is established. That would be a totally separate approval process. This doesn't guarantee any redevelopment agreements would be issued. Those would be totally separate. The hiring of contractors to do the studies would be another approval that you would go through. This would be just a resolution that says, in the event a district is created later that generates money, we could pay ourselves back for the cost of the studies that would allow us to establish that district.
Thank you, Noel.
Can I, can I make-
Alderman Taylor.
I think what I want people to understand here is because we're thinking of making this a TIF district, we are not saying that we're giving money to like the potential casino or dispensaries. We're looking at using that money for infrastructure and like economic studies and that kind of stuff. But I think people need to get clarification on that right off the bat, so they understand that.
Yes, this resolution, as I said, would only allow us to reimburse ourselves for the costs of doing studies that would help us create those districts. The creation of the districts is a separate approval process, and any redevelopment agreement that were to be done under a TIF district would be individually negotiated and brought before you for approval sometime after a TIF district was created. It doesn't promise that there would be any. My intention in bringing it to you is specifically around infrastructure.
And speaking to incentives to a casino or dispensary areas, I don't think we have any problem with saying that's probably 99.9% is not gonna happen. Is that pretty clear, Alderman?
Oh, it's 100% for me.
All right, it's 100%, so we don't have to worry about that. But it is to, as Noel mentioned earlier, is to make sure we do our due diligence as we move forward and for infrastructure improvements, to have those dollars set aside for that so it doesn't come out of our general fund. And that, we think this is a, all of us think this is a, this is just a great idea to do that. So, good job, Noel, and you and your team. Okay? Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Items seven, eight, nine, there being none. Items 10, closing arguments. I'm sorry, closing arguments. Closing items, Alderman's time. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Seager.
No comment.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Just a reminder that tomorrow, Ward Four will be having a meeting at Miguel Juarez starting at 5:30, which is located on Butcher Streak. Ward Four meeting.
Alderman Newsome.
Pass.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you very much. Quick comment on this motion that just passed with the mayor's breaking the tie. I just, I didn't vote for it, this Elite Motors incentive agreement because I couldn't do that in great, good conscience wherein we just passed, recently passed a property tax increase for every property owner in the city of Waukegan. And with this motion for Elite Motors, essentially what we're doing is giving them a portion of the sales tax that would come to the city. So, if the city was gonna make a dollar in tax off of a sale of a car, they're gonna get a portion of that back. And it just doesn't make sense to me. We raise our property taxes for our citizens, got a business comes in, they make money, they're gonna give us taxes off of that money, but we're gonna give them a portion back. I don't like it. I don't agree with it, and that's why I voted no. So, in the sixth ward, I'm happy to report that we did conduct a radar audit northbound on County Street at Center last month and, or month ago, a couple months ago, six weeks ago. And we had some really interesting statistics on the number of cars and how fast they were moving over there. And I can provide, I'd be more than happy to provide detail on those statistics, but it was very interesting. And recently, I think yesterday, we put a similar trailer out at St. Anastasia School eastbound on Glen Flor Avenue, and we're gathering statistics there and too. Along with these, this radar trailer that goes in, you can expect, in the sixth ward, at my request, and I take the weight for this, I am requesting the police officers, and I'm working very closely with our police department, I'm requesting increased enforcement of our speeding ordinances and laws as well as city sticker enforcements and alternate parking. So, don't blame the police. If you're getting a violation, blame your Alderman Keith Turner, okay? So, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Alderman Rivera.
Pass.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to encourage the other aldermen and the mayor to support this meeting, these temporary workers brought to our attention today, going to this meeting on March 8th and trying to address some of these, what I see as human rights issues. So, I'd like to put that out there. Thank you to all of you. I know some of you have left, but thank you for coming and bringing this to our attention. Recently, two important articles appeared in the New Sun. It was interesting, we recognized two of the long-term reporters tonight. The first one was regarding legal marijuana. As most of you know, I voted no on selling it in Waukegan. It was a complicated issue. There's oftentimes I wish I could vote maybe on stuff. That was one of the times. Anyway, "Too many people think marijuana is completely harmless. The reality is that marijuana, like alcohol, opioids, and stimulants, alters the mind and is potentially addictive. Even though some have positive that marijuana, that marijuana may be a solution to the opioid crisis, recent published reporting highlights strong research showing marijuana use increases the risk for later prescription opioid misuse. Addiction, like other diseases, has both environmental and genetic risk factors, and marijuana should be viewed in that context. If one of your parents has an addiction history, you are at least six times as likely as those without addiction in their family to succumb to addiction yourself. Research on regular use of marijuana shows that certain brain regions are vulnerable and at risk for impairment. Some of the consequences may be a lower IQ and impaired cognitive functioning. School performance suffers, and regular users are more likely to drop out of school. Now more than ever, it's incumbent upon all of us to speak up and tell the entire story in an effort to prevent the risks of expanded marijuana use from turning into regrettable realities." I was relieved, I reached out to the police chief yesterday and asked if we've seen any spike in incidences as a result of the marijuana legalization January 1st. And he assured me there hasn't been. So, I'm glad to be able to say that. The second important article was regarding our casino bids. The article outlines several concerns about the people involved in the bids, including some key figures who have been denied gambling licenses in the past. One proposal would have been operated by a man who was previously an executive at a chain when it surrendered its gambling licenses following a scandal. Another bid includes developers whose ties to a Springfield power broker were cited by the Illinois gambling regulators when Waukegan lost its last bid for a casino in 2008. I asked our highly-paid consultant I asked our highly-paid consultant the night we voted here in city council chambers on the casino bids if he considered any ethical issues when evaluating the proposals, and he said no. I was not aware of these issues I referred to earlier when we voted, and I wonder if my fellow Aldermen were. Would this information have changed the outcome of the votes that night? I compel the mayor to conduct an economic impact study as soon as possible. The people of Waukegan deserve an open, honest, transparent process. If we are getting a casino, don't we want it to be the one that not only will be an economic success, but operated in an ethical and honest way? I also want to just remind people, early voting has started. March 17th is the election. There's lots of important races on the ballot. Let your voice be heard. And I want to remind everyone, my eighth ward meeting will be Thursday, February 27th, 6:30 PM. We'll call school. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
A couple of things. I want to explain why I made the decision on Elite Motors that I did. We have a policy for economic incentive agreements, and that was not developed, this was developed a while back. I looked over that document very carefully, and I don't necessarily see that they qualify for this. Some of the changes that they have made are remodeling, new lighting, lifts and service areas, parking lots. Really, when we provide these economic incentives, they should be for people who are providing employment, increasing, giving more to their community. New lighting and parking lots, we as residents do that. You're not getting any incentive on your taxes, so I can't justify that. So that's why, even though this business is in my ward, I could not endorse doing it. I want to talk a little bit about the ETO. If you didn't see it, it's at Milan Banquets this weekend from 2:00 to 5:00. I will be one of the Aldermen that will be there to, to listen to this. I think any of you that have expressed concern about ETO, you need to show up, and you need to be present at these meetings and learn. I want to talk a little bit about recognizing the gentleman from the Waukegan New Sun here tonight. That's a lot of work that they've worked over the years, and there's been a lot of changes in newspapers and journalism, so I want to offer my congratulations to them. It's a job well done. Last, but not least, on a lighter note, I want to wish my colleague here a happy 29th birthday tomorrow. Help me in wishing her a happy birthday. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
I just want to encourage everyone to continue to celebrate Black History Month and celebrate the greatness that they have brung to the table. Also, those, if I have not responded to your phone call, please see me after the meeting so we can resolve that. And also want to say thank you all for expressing your concern about the workforce. And if I maybe stand to be correct, but I believe we can involve our congressman in possibly addressing some of these issues. Thank you.
All right, everyone, everyone, I should have said this earlier. We're having a major problem in our school zones when it comes to some valuable people who probably work per hour less than anybody in this room. That's our crossing guards. I've stood at some of those areas where the crossing guards help our children cross the street. And because of the size of some of our schools and the neighborhood school process that we have today, there are a lot of kids who are walking across Lewis Avenue, Velvadere, Jackson, Glenflora, Macquarie. And some of you drivers just have no respect for what they're trying to do. Chief, Commander Beach, Neighborhood Policing, and Patrol are going to be actively circling I personally have witnessed a person driving past the stops, I'm going to call it the stop sign, when the buses, and I want to flip it, I know I can't, and chase that person down. But what I have done, I've gotten the license plate, year, make, and model of that vehicle, and I'm going to personally sign that ticket. These crossing guards are out there for our children and their parents to speed through there, disrespect the, you know, the stop sign. We're going to be out there. We're going to be working along with them. It's not always going to be with the lights up, with the Waukegan police on the side. I don't know what those penalties are, but I know if you run that, that bus thing, that's a, I don't know if I should have called it a thing, but the bus stop sign, if you, if you run that, that's a pretty, what's the fine on that, anybody? I'll let Commander Beach, I know you're sick today, chief. You can get your license suspended. And most of this happening around the elementary schools. And these, these little kids, you know, they're kids. They're going to dart out in front. Even at 20 miles an hour, if a kid gets in front of your car, it's going to be very difficult for you to stop. So Aldermen, in your ward meetings, stress very hard. We're going to be watching. I've received over 20 complaints from crossing guards throughout the city. I'm going to start writing myself in the morning, and I'm going to get your plate, your year, make, and model, and I'm going to sign that ticket. Because they need your help. Some of them walk to their post two miles because they just enjoy it. It's only 30 seconds. I know at Whittier, at Whittier Elementary School, and that's at Lewis, I don't know what the cross street is over there, by the church. Over there, it is, and it's just, it's horrible. It's, it's a disgrace that you speed through there. If you're late for work, you're late. Going through the school zone is not going to make you be on time. We don't have a traffic division like we used to have. We used to have about, what, the five or six commander at one point in time, but we did those details. Due to our cuts back in 2008 and 2009, we do not have that. So now we have patrol doing it, and a lot of the time that's doing shift change. But we're going to be out there, and our officers are going to write you. So if you're speeding, and you thought you were late, you're going to be even later. Be mindful around these schools, please. Elementary schools are, are the all the schools you want to speed with. I know the high school kids, they can be a little dart out in front of you, walk in front of you, you know, that's just them being, you know, teenagers. But these, these elementary and, and the middle schools, we have to be conscious of that. I had to say that because I can't believe some of the things that we're hearing. Now they, one of them had one of their, that cell phone is a monster. They had it on a cell phone with a car going by, and I just told them, if you get the license plate, is that right? If they get the license plate and we write a ticket they have to sign for, is that correct, Commander? Kind of. He's trying to tell me kind of correct, but we'll do it by the letter of the law, but just, just be conscious, everybody. So anybody out there looking, please, Emily, a little something in the paper will always help out. Other than that, most my Alderman Taylor, and second my Alderman Seager, to adjourn, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Thank you, Alderman, for tonight, and happy birthday, Alderman Florian.